All this meeting of the Del Rapid City Council to order. Welcome to those in attendance and welcome to those online watching. Just a quick update. Real soon, we hope to be switching over to our own video system. And that information will be on our website because that's where you'll access the video. So we're getting real close if you see these funny things hanging here from the ceiling. So anyway, we'll ask the finance officer to now please call a roll.
Hawk?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Garrett?
Here.
Porcher?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Ron Sargen?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Rose, sorry.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name. Thank you. Now the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Mark to approve the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motions carried. At this time, I'm calling to order the Board of Equalization. By law, we are required to open as convene as a Board of Equalization on this Monday evening. And as you all are aware, we'll have the actual activity will take place tomorrow night when we have about 21 property owners who will be into to visit with us. So at this time, I entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn to Tuesday, March 17th at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motions carried. Approval of-
Mayor, if I could just point out for tomorrow night's meeting, in order to maybe cut down on the number of people in this room, we're looking at setting up kind of timed timed out increments for everybody. So 10 to 15 minute increments so people can come in and out and they're not sitting in here in the same room. We're with 30, 40 people since 10 is the guidelines that have been put in place as of this time. So we can get people coming in and out of here.
So will you hear it and then make the decision?
I think maybe that's a discussion we should have about how to handle it.
If, because if they're going to be in and out, you know, they would kind of like to know when they go home.
When they go home, yeah.
And I know years ago, it used to be you listened to it, you made the decision, you went on to the next guy years ago.
But then we changed it because people got figured out the strategy of what they could say to get the board to-
A moment of unique situation, you're right.
Right, this is a unique situation, correct. So I would advocate for hearing, making a decision and moving on.
Like how many per 15 minute block?
I mean, I gotta look at them. I haven't had a chance to read that today. But because there's some that are back to back to back and there are going to be similar situations. Some are going to take more discussion. So maybe we can kind of time them out, kind of guessing what's what there. And maybe ask people to just hang out in their car in the parking lot or something too. And then we can go up and invite them in, wouldn't be the end of the world. So but having 30, 40 people all sitting in here for three hours isn't advised at this time.
How many people?
There's 20 properties, so I mean, I've-
There's a school board as an accounting guy, right?
No, they, they're not.
School board is not-
School.
The school board will, yes. That's what we ballack is the school board. Represented.
Okay, next is approval of minutes from our Mark's second regular meeting.
We are 428-3595.
Capital C D.
Capital.
What were the numbers?
428-3595.
Entertained a motion approving the minutes. Moved by Mark to approve the minutes from Mark's second meeting, you'll have a second.
I'll second that.
Mike seconds that motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motions carried. This point, its visitors to be heard, who are not on the agenda, we don't have anybody here for that. So next is a public hearing for an issue of liquor license to Prohibition Pub.
New owners of 813, 813 Garfield Avenue are Heidi and Terry Anderson. They, it's the old Monkey's Bar location everyone's familiar with, the corner of Fourth and Garfield. They plan to operate a bar and food establishment and with the name of Prohibition Pub at this location. They've paid the application fee and the taxes are in line. You know, I don't know if, I know there's some history at that location and that's still an ongoing situation that is still being worked on, isn't completely resolved at this time. I would say that these two things are not connected and we can't connect them. The council is wondering about that. At this time, recommend the council approve the request for an on sale liquor license to be issued to Heidi and Terry Anderson at the address of 813 Garfield Avenue for their business Prohibition Pub.
Are the new owners aware of our policies on payment of invoices?
Yes, they are. We had multiple conversations. We've also since updated the operating agreement and they are going to be up to the same standards.
Right, so they, it's missed, first time it's missed.
Additional. Yes, correct, yeah, and they're well aware of it.
Okay, all right. Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for-
For the Andersons at, okay. Heard the motion to approve full on sale liquor license to the Andersons at 813 Garfield. We'll have a second.
Second.
Seconded by James, are any questions?
Was there any outstanding bounds from the previous owners?
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was talking about is that there's ongoing and they can't be connected, legally can't be connected to the property. And with that, the city is still pursuing, has had a judgment and is still pursuing a collection of that.
Sure, but wouldn't that be part of the sale? It would be a lot of-
They, they deeded it back to the seller like 10 days before our judgment was entered. So it did not attach to the property. So I was hopeful that it would and it didn't, so.
It was on a contract, indeed.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motions carried for new business. Next is the consent agenda.
Memorial Day Parade, May 25th, American Legion request waiving the fee. You know, there's, I just put in here the caveat if this thing is still going on that the Legion is aware of that and will make the right call at that time.
I'll move to approve consent, consent agenda with waiving the fee.
Seconded. Moved by Chad and seconded by Gary to approve the event permit, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motions carried. Next is old business, AT&T and the water tower.
This is the second time we've had this discussion. Went back to AT&T, just a little history here. Currently, city currently collects $40,666.68 annually from AT&T for 15th Street Water Tower. They contacted us requesting that to be reduced by almost 40% to $24,000 a year. The second negotiation we had, or after that negotiation, they offered 26 for a year. And then further discussions I've had with them in recent weeks, they have placed a final offer, renegotiated the lease at $28,800, $2,400 per month. So it'd be $11,868 loss from what we currently receive. So I also put in here, in comparison, we received $2,310 monthly from Verizon for the 10th Street Water Tower location. You know, the explanation I continue to get is that the old model of cell service is completely shifting. The market has completely changed. Transition to 5G is occurring. These, the current tower sites don't hold the importance of what the, because they're not the old, they're just kind of a base of operations. They're a necessity still, but they don't hold the weight. You know, the higher the better before, these new ones are the lower the better. So they don't need to be up at the top of our tower. They can choose a different location that is lower and it works better for their networking, for their, for the 5G small cell services. You know, I've tried to push them saying, okay, you're going to reduce this revenue, but we're eventually going to be working with you because they're going to be putting the small cells up around the community. So what can we, can we start discussing lease negotiations there so we know if we can recoup our loss from what we're losing from the tower? And the guy I'm talking to doesn't have the authority to have that discussion and doesn't have a timeline when that implementation might occur here. He's just been tasked with renegotiating these leases so that they can start moving on throughout the country. So I guess, I can't feel out what our leverage is, keep going back to him. We could go back to them with maybe a middle ground and see where that ends up. But I can't really feel out this person that I'm negotiating with exactly where I think they're at.
One's our current contractor?
Two, 21.
Well, it says September of 2022.
22, sorry.
So it's two and a half years out, yeah.
What, where's the other towers at?
In our region?
Yeah, so there another one they can find or that they're gonna find out what they're paying there or?
Yeah, I've, there's been contact through the, through the city managers in the area. These are all kind of being renegotiated everywhere. Verizon's doing it, we haven't heard from Verizon yet, so.
So when was it negotiated with Verizon, the other tower? When was that one done?
That was like two years ago because we painted it last year and I think it was a year before that.
Was theirs higher before that?
They weren't in town before that. Verizon didn't have a, didn't have a lease in town before that. So that was all new revenue when Verizon came in.
These towers are going to be still in play and need these 40 towers for at least five to 10 years. I mean, I'm just-
No, no, I agree with you. He just won't, yeah, I couldn't get this guy to commit. You know, I thought maybe he uses this as leverage, like let's work on this and you guys can- Try to get it out and-
But isn't he looking for 30 years with renewals?
Yeah, with all the renewals that are in place with that.
So it's going to be more than five to 10 years they need this tower.
Yeah, that's a good one, yeah.
Well, it's a renewal every five years, yeah.
Six a year.
Right.
So they're looking at 30 years worth of renewals, so.
And then it goes up by 10%, 10% in 2027.
And so a lot of the communities would be like us where they're leasing their space apparently in their water towers or?
Yes, yeah, a lot of communities, yeah, most, most communities in the area rely on this as a source of revenue.
So would like ours be servicing Baltic or would they have use of Baltics Tower or?
I don't know distances.
I don't either. Four miles, four fifteen. Yeah, it's about 12 miles without that state line and I had drops.
Because I'm just thinking about my competition, where else are they going to be looking? You know, Royal Water does have water tower out here.
What, yeah, yeah, this is true.
Baltic, if they have a water tower, it's not being used.
Then they gotta move all their equipment too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's cheaper to buy an easement and put up a tower and put up that.
Well, that's what he's saying that they won't, they're not going to do those really anymore because they don't need to go up high anymore when they, when they go to 5G.
Right, but they got the availability of when the tower closed that they can just use anyways.
The other item we discussed is, you know, we can, this has been brought up before. There's a draft ordinance out there and there's some communities that have enacted pertaining to the installation of this 5G equipment. You know, if they're using light poles, telephone poles, XL poles, whatever, whatever, and that whole fee structure and all that. And, you know, so we talked about that. Who knows?
Who knows when they're figuring it out.
My thinking is why would they be coming to Del's with 5G in the next, you know, I just, I don't, you know, what do I know? I don't, I'm not a tech guy, but-
No, I think what Chad is saying is right though, it's five years out minimum. The other argument, and he says it here, is that, you know, there, in this Sioux Falls regional market, AT&T is a smaller percentage player. I mean, who has an AT&T phone here? You do, okay. Everyone else has Verizon and that's what-
And if you have a track phone, they hook up to Verizon. I think a lot of these, you know, other, you know, cellular, they're all, they use the Verizon system, so.
So when you compare it to Verizon, I mean, it's still more than them.
Their footprint that they utilize in the tower is a little bit bigger than Verizon, I'd say too. They're just their equipment footprint, so it should be higher. And my argument was that 15th Street Tower is, they're on the top, the Verizon one's in the stem. So they're up higher and that was my theory kind of going into this is that we can, you know, this tower's, 15th Street Tower is better real estate, it should be charged more, but, and he's, he reversed that and said, well, with the new 5G stuff, they don't need to be as high, it's better for them to be lower and all this.
That, that tower is not in play for real estate and 5G. I mean, that's a whole different discussion, discussion to discussion. That's apples and oranges.
That's the argument that they are making though. You can see that in that correspondence.
Yeah, well, that's nonsensical.
So is Verizon mounted down on the stem of the water tower?
Yeah, they're in the stem, you can see that, the painted blue. Because we don't have a corral up on the top for them to be able to saw that.
So currently, they have an exclusive right to the top of that water tower?
There is other Speed Connect or whatever they're called now, they change names every year. Yeah, I don't think, it's not exclusive, there's other services on the 15th Street Tower. Why don't they have to honor their contract till it ends, like two years?
They do.
Why, I mean, why do we do anything? Why don't we just let them?
The threat of them pulling their tower down against their Royal Water.
The initial letter, initial letter said though that they will start finding another location. Is what, is what their letter said, so. So they're doing this in advance because they know it's going to take time to find another location. So they're trying to get this figured out. And, I mean, it said we had 30 days to respond or they would put in motion finding another location if we were unwilling to negotiate otherwise.
What about the renewals, are those negotiable?
I would say-
They want six, five year renewals.
If you look at the market, again, with Justin saying the high point of that tower should be more, but what's the market for other companies going up there?
I mean, there's, who's merging? Is it T-Mobile's merging with, with somebody else? Maybe there's, with Sprint, I think, you know, maybe there's a market there if they plan to expand in here. But we don't have a T-Mobile or Sprint site in town right now.
So they're borrowing. I think, I think the Verizon number's closer to what the market would be. To me, when I first read through this, I thought that we were getting away with highway robbery on that first contract.
We negotiated it.
Yeah. I, I get, I'm not saying I agree with that, I'm just saying I get what they're doing. It's not completely unreasonable. They're pulling themselves back to the mean of what the other major carriers have.
They're not the big dog in town and they're paying the big price.
Right.
Big dogs not paying the price.
And it's not that big of a difference to be on the stem versus the top.
It seemed like they, after they initially put equipment up there and then they added more or they did something here, didn't they come back?
Yeah, they've been upgrading almost every year. They've added with new equipment. And they've redone the corral, they had to make that more stable. So they put, they put a brand new corral up there. That was about four or five years ago. Welded it and repainted it. So that's why I was also kind of calling and bluff because they're so invested into that location.
Entertained, entertained a motion.
What are we looking for a motion to for Justin to go back and continue to?
I would say either a motion to accept what was offered or a motion to go back with, with another middle ground type, type-
If I had to guess, the guy you're negotiating with only has so much power.
Probably leverage, I mean, he would have to go back to whomever.
Right.
If I say that we met, this is what was decided, he'll go back with whatever we decide and then he'll say yes or no to that.
At that point, it's 50/50 whether they're really want to keep negotiating or just start looking. I'm not a side gig, I don't know.
I think you could get another, where are we at now? 24. And you could get another 50, another 100 or 200 a month out of them before they're, that's the theme pickup.
55 years is a long time, even with the 10% increase a year or every five is.
I mean, it'd be a loss, it'd be a loss of revenue compared to what we currently receive, but it is guaranteed revenue too.
The loss we're talking about is $11,868.
Yeah, yeah, with the current rate, yeah.
If we went with this new rate.
All previous contracts, once this is up in two years, they've met all the allegations of previous contracts, renewals, what have you.
Yes, they've been up to date on all of their payments when they do increase.
Because, you know, we're looking at this new agreement and they want, you know, 10% increase every five years commencing September 1st of 2027. We get 10 years down the road, oh, we just can't take this word.
Right.
Well, wait a minute, oh, we, you know, we've got to be back.
That's going to happen eventually when 5G does take over here.
Or once they're ready to get rid of 4G.
What's that?
They still, it's my understanding, they still need the base towers to operate 4G to send the signal. So they're still going to need these.
Be for your flip phone though.
Huh?
Be for your flip phone. People are on the flip.
Yeah, you're right though, it'll be, it won't be 50 years or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the technology is always changing.
Right, 10 years from now will be, they'll be changing everything or AT&T will be out of business or whatever.
Or somebody else buying out.
Buying out and moving the lease.
So I mean, it's, and now regarding their accounts, someone's going to be looking to change it.
Entertained a motion.
Still picking.
What if you're not going to ask them for $35,000?
The 33 is where we're at now. I just, my mind's been elsewhere.
You said $28,000.
$2,800 is what I said for maybe potentially up to.
The final offer negotiate lease of $28,800.
Yeah.
So if you're not going to ask them for something in the middle and you're only going to go up 1,200 bucks or something, then just do the deal.
That's kind of my, that's kind, well, I mean, money's money, but I kind of feel the same way because we're, at some point, we're negotiating. I don't think it's that hard for them to find another location.
It just becomes that they've got their infrastructure there and it's like, god damn.
Right, because I mean, I know, I know other small cell wide area networks who are using, you know, radios and there's options for putting these things out.
It's not lightweight equipment, but with everything, it's getting-
I'm talking like 20 plus mile shots though.
Right, it's getting-
So it's similar radios and similar type equipment.
It's getting lighter and lighter bumping everything, the equipment's getting smaller.
So they're offering us $28,800?
$28,800, $11,868 less than what we're currently, $40,000. So that is $2,400 a month.
Do you think they would go $28,800 a month, Justin?
I think that's probably on the high end, but, you know, I'm a government guy. I'm not a big in the negotiation game usually, I'm not too practiced up on that lately. But I know, you know, what's the, I watch American Pickers. And what do you do? You might start high and then maybe they'll come down to the middle, right?
Well, we know this guy's watching us right now, right?
Yeah, that's true, we're doing this out in the open.
You're out there?
Saying it was contracted. Yeah, I know.
It just dawned on me.
I like how they call us the landlord if they're the ones that are flexible on the rental.
My, my guess is he has a threshold that he can negotiate, I wonder what he can negotiate by.
Yeah.
If I gave it, could it go up to somebody else? Sure, but you're probably starting, going to start dealing with somebody else at that point.
And if you ask him, we talked, could you potentially get it up to 28? And so then maybe the council provides for flexibility for it.
Can, can we, can we give Justin that power to say if he shuts you down and says, no, we're searching otherwise? Can you pump the brakes and say?
All right, fine, fine, we'll, we'll deal with that.
There you go. My motion would be to give Justin that negotiating power to accept their final, their current final dollar amount, but try to negotiate higher.
Second? Seconded by Barry, any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name, motions carried. Moving on to new business, the 2019 annual report.
Kind of forgot that that was on there today. Told you a minute ago, hold on, I gotta finish this. Who seconded that?
Barry.
No, dude.
I have this thing goes up, nobody wants to say anyone else.
Well, I completed the 2019 annual report.
That's quite the move.
Do you all have the Excel file in front of you? Well, piece of paper for Mark and Mike.
Me too, it's too small on there.
I cut it down as much as I possibly could. So I combined, I'm showing the last five years. Is everyone looking at it, some of you are looking at it, you don't have it on the laptop? Okay. Well, while you're looking, five years worth of annual reports, I combined everything. So when it says total revenue and total expenditures, it's all of our funds. So general fund, wastewater fund, liquor fund, everything all together. I figured I'd do high level and when the auditors come in, they can break it down a little bit more for you. Do I need to pause for you, Gary?
No, most of it is.
Okay.
Can you touch that corner, this is view attachment?
Don't touch that.
Game to play.
There you go.
Our total revenue for the year was close to $7 million. Little bit up from last year. And all of this to, keeping in mind all our revenue includes sales tax, property tax and you grant money that we got, I mean, literally anything that's come in the door. Total expenditures were at 5.4 million, which put us excess revenue over expenditures of 1.5 million. So besides 2017, pretty in line with the last few years.
Explain maybe why that, why that was, was it?
I believe it was a wastewater treatment facility. We had a lot of grant and loan funds coming in in 2017 versus this year. Expenditures seem quite the same though.
We had some on time grants in 19 too.
So it shows you guys that some revenue, but you're really, it's already spent over here.
Yes, yeah, revenue is everything that comes in the door and expenses, everything that goes out the door. Yes. Yeah, revenue is everything that comes in the door and expenses, everything that goes out the door. Not broken up into anything. If you want to see, I will put this out there and I usually say this at the end, if you want individual numbers, if you wanna see, you know, just one fund, general fund, I could certainly pull that all up for you. I just, again, I wanna keep this at high level, so we're not here all night, because I can go through every line item. Moving down, cash, we have at six point seven million dollars at the end of the year. It's a little up in the last five years. Accounts receivable, all the monies that we're expecting to get in or should be getting in, usually within the first three months of the next year. About half a million. Our inventory, this is something that wasn't documented when I started. So we've been, every year, I make Brittany count every year. All the supplies that we have on hand, we're getting a little more accurate every year. The guys all go out and count and they wanna know exactly what's out there and the auditors go out and recount everything to make sure that we're on track. Let's see, other assets, this is, I should have been more prepared by a lot. What are our other assets? Oh, we have deposits in the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. We have so much funds in there, about fifty thousand dollars. That makes up most of it. Our, and that usually stays about the same. We have, so the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, they changed their accounting and that's why it's kind of, it's going up, the amount of funds that we had essentially invested. It was, it said it was about forty thousand dollars since I started and I think before that, and now they've changed their accounting and so we need to show our investment essentially increasing with them. The net pension asset, that's also a change in accounting. That's something that it's Yasby sixty-eight, it's a new rule, I guess, out there, that we need to show on our books our retirement and any liability or asset that we have with them. Again, just an accounting change. You can see that it kinda goes up and down. It fluctuates a lot and I honestly, I told you this last year, I don't a hundred percent understand that. I'll be the first one to admit why, why we have to do this and hold it on our books, but we do. So I, I'll put those there. Capital assets, twenty-nine million dollars in capital assets. This is net of depreciation. This is our cars, our tractors, our buildings, our land, literally everything. And as you can see, it just, it keeps increasing because every year we, we purchase more equipment or more expensive equipment. And so that's.
It's the streets.
Yes, streets and literally everything we own.
Otter sewer, waste harder plant, everything's in there.
And the deferred outcomes of resources, that flows in with the net pension asset, so I'm not gonna re-explain that. Moving down into our liabilities, accounts payable, same thing, just all our bills that we, that we need to pay at the end of the year that haven't been paid yet. Other current liabilities, similar to other assets, just minor liabilities that we owe. Again, the pension-related deferred inflows, just the other side of the transaction for the pension. So our non-current liabilities due within one year are all of our debt that's owed this next year. So we owe four hundred twenty thousand dollars this next year that we'll make in all of our debt payments. And total outstanding is eight million for the remainder due in more than one year for all of our debt. And again, net, oh, and then net position is at the end. So if you guys look down at the bottom, I tried to break this out this year. I didn't have this in previous years. You guys always ask what we have to spend. How much money is sitting there in cash that's available? Because although you see the cash line above, that doesn't mean that all of that's available to spend. There are certain things such as the debt due within one year. We can't be spending, we have to have that cash that aside to be able to pay our debt. So I tried to break this out as good as possible. So general fund, we follow the line down. I did this for all five years. General fund is in a little bit different accounting basis, so bear with me here. We have about two point nine million dollars that is available to be spent. Now, we probably shouldn't spend all the money, but that's essentially what's sitting there that we can spend in cash. Our water is about one million, our water funds. Our wastewater fund is about one point one million dollars. And our liquor fund is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. A lot of that liquor fund gets transferred over into the general fund every year too, so that's why that doesn't grow as much. And then equipment replacement, we have about five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars sitting there.
Okay, so like the wastewater, we got a million one.
Correct.
And then we got it for a loan against the new.
So I don't have that broken out, but we do have a lot of debt sitting in the wastewater. So this, yes, those funds are sitting there, but we could use that to pay down some of the debt. Anything that was, like I said, that's required to be set aside to be able to make those payments for the next year is not included in that one point one. It's total.
Eight point one.
Yeah.
Eight point one million.
But that includes water.
Yes, that's.
That's, okay, so that's not wrong. That's.
That's water and wastewater.
Yes. Sorry, that's very high level. I don't really know how much you guys want in detail. Does anyone else have any questions? It's hard for me to explain some of it too. I understand it in my head, but I can't, I have a hard time explaining it.
And what's the exact number we have to keep in reserve?
There is not an exact number.
Thirty percent is what is recommended.
Recommended, yes.
Of the next year's obligation, mandatory obligations.
Yes. Generally obligations are, you're saying, yeah, your budget, your, your general fund budget. So that if you were to, yeah, thirty percent of a year's budget is what you should be.
And our mandatory, what's mandatory would be built into that budget, so.
So you, yeah, I guess when I was saying that, things take away some of the discretionary things that you could.
Correct.
Any other questions?
We hovered around ninety to a hundred percent. But then that, you wanna go back to the discussion we had during this year's budget was spending some of that down. And we talked about old seventy-seven. And so, you know, we're, that might not happen this year, but I think that's gonna be the twenty twenty-one.
Do you guys have, so thirty percent's mandatory? Do you have like a, or not, or recommended? Do you guys have like an internal, like, well, we don't really, well, fifty percent?
We don't like to be below what we're at.
I think, I think we're incredibly healthy right now. Healthy is good, but also too, from the taxpayer's perspective, we shouldn't just be sitting hoarding cash. We should be spending that on public infrastructure. So there's, that's something to consider too. Good to have the rainy day fund, but to a certain level.
So, so the funds are there for that rainy day where?
Yes.
This year's budget, we talked about redoing part one fifteen. There the money is there. We could spend it.
Who knows what's gonna happen with our sales tax in the next five months?
One thing I wanted to point out while, while I was talking about, so if you see that unrestricted net position, it's above the general fund modified accrual basis. Do you guys see that? Six point one, five-two million dollars? Do you see that number?
What number is that?
Six.
Unrestricted.
Six point one, five-two. So I'm gonna try and explain this to you so you understand it. So all the numbers below it, one, two, three, four, the five numbers below it should equal that. However, it won't because of the modified accrual basis. So when I go through, I have to, with general fund, I have to do two separate financial savings basically because of the way the way the water and the wastewater have to be reported. And so there are certain things that on the general fund are considered restricted, but would not be considered restricted in water and wastewater. One of those things would be inventory. And so there are certain things that I have to pull out of there for modified accrual, but I wanted to show you that. So the two point five is actual, is what, when we are discussing here about how much we can spend, it would be two point five. So I just, I didn't know if, if there's an accounting person in here who knows that all five of those numbers should add up. The reason why they don't is because of the type of accounting I had to do with the general fund.
Well, it's, it's fair to say that when it comes to municipal government and what the state mandates as far as accounting system, it's different than a normal, regular business and how they would do accounting. It's just another different world of accounting and I think that, that always generates some confusion, I think, on the part of people who, if they're used to the the regular commercial business world way of doing things and in a way the government has decided, or the state of South Dakota has decided to do.
Federal government.
Does the cash on hand, our reserves, does that ever play a part into whoever's making the decision out here as far as grants and loans?
The, in the, in the water and wastewater fund, they don't look at our general.
They wouldn't look at general, because it should.
They look at our water and wastewater fund. And generally, when we are making an application to the state.
We're spending a bunch of that down.
We're, we're telling them we're gonna commit, we're saying, we're gonna commit three hundred, four hundred thousand towards this project.
They're, they're more interested in our rates, right?
And how we're going to continue to pay for the.
They're, they're interested in your current debt, your rates, your cash flow, and where your accounts sit. They're interested in all that combined before they make a decision on what they're gonna provide. And we will know what this next project is by next week, on the twenty-sixth.
If any of you have any further detailed questions, I can sure talk your ear off. I won't do it tonight, though. I mean, I make a whole lot of sense to you.
Too much talking about numbers makes my head hurt. And as I told you before, I definitely appreciate people like you who like to do this kind of stuff.
It's getting more and more fun every year because I understand more and more of it. And all the changes.
Any other questions? Thank you for, for that. It's a lot of work and this, and this is something that we did. When did you start doing this? Has this been rolled for?
Twenty, twenty fifteen, I started doing this.
Add that to your repertoire here, okay? Right? Well, appreciate that.
Literally that whole buyer that we get from the auditors are my numbers now. Didn't start that way.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to concrete repair project.
Concrete repair project.
Oh, I need an emotion and a.
Oh, and accept it?
Yes, please. Please do that. That was a lot of work.
Entertained a motion to accept the twenty nineteen annual report. Moved by Bob is their second, seconded by Gary.
I have one, I'm sorry, before you all approve, I have one more comment I'm so proud of. We did not go over budget this year. So there will not be a ding on the audit report unless they find something that I did wrong. So hopefully they did.
Well, in favor of motions, signify I was saying aye. Both nay. Motion's carried. Okay, concrete repair.
Attachment in the packet is the bids that were received last week for the contract repair, for the concrete repair project that's gonna be mainly focused on Fifteenth Street. Received six bids. Low bidder was from Dakota Contracting Corporation in the amount of ninety-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fourteen cents. The engineer's estimate was a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the quantities we had established with the project. Yeah, I mean, all the bids, you can see those bid tabs were kind of across the board. We had several in kind of competition in that same range. The low bidder, DGR has worked with, they, this is the, this is kind of their specialty. What they do is concrete repair across the state. A lot of work for this, a lot of work for the state of South Dakota. So we have, we have faith that they will be able to do this project for us this year in good standing. So with that, given a little under budget, which is good, so recommend the approval of concrete repair or Dakota Contracting for the concrete repair project in the amount of ninety-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Fourteen.
Fourteen cents, sorry.
So are these new, is this new company?
No, they've been around for.
I mean, for us, though.
We, I've never worked with them, but DGR has worked with them on other projects. I don't think Clarence has worked with them yet either, but they've been around. Actually, I think some of the Gold Bronsons started with them before TNR, so they've been around.
They have the red trucks that you would see like on the interstate from the path where the red, the red trucks.
Entertained a motion. Moved by Chad to approve awarding of bid to Dakota and an amount of ninety-three, ninety-nine, ninety-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fourteen cents. It's been seconded by Gary. Any questions? Well, in favor of signify I was saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Motion's carried. Next is the slurry seal project and that bid.
Slurry seal project came in good too. The city teamed up with the city of Sioux Falls and several of the other surrounding communities to, this is our first kind of experiment, gonna do this slurry seal product in the community. Based on the quantities that we put forth to the city of Sioux Falls, the low bid came from Missouri Petroleum Products out of St. Louis. Based on the bid amount or the quantities that we put forward, the contract would be in the amount of seventy-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents. The engineer estimate was eighty-three thousand for this amount, so a little bit under budget again. We've already kind of had discussions about maybe adding a block or so onto the project. Since we're a little bit under budget, we can do a change order with the contractor at that time. But with that said, good bids, these folks have done, this is one of their specialties. They've been up in our area in the past. We've never worked specifically with them, but they're gonna be doing Crooks in Sioux Falls and Brandon and Hartford.
Harrisburg, Lys.
Yeah.
Barker, Salem.
Yeah.
I talked to the Salem guy and he said they did theirs at the end of last year and they were happy so far.
What areas would we do this?
It's gonna happen on Iowa. It is gonna happen on Forest Street. Between the two concrete sections. It's gonna happen up on Northview and Harrison is where we have picked out.
Too early to, to ask how they're gonna schedule. I mean, they've got.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna have to work with them on that. I don't know how that will roll out. I don't know how that will roll out.
Can they use that process to fix spots where the concrete is heaved on Forest Street? Like to.
Oh, this, well, that's, that's a concrete repair project, but not the, slurry seal is more like a chip.
Yeah, but how thick can they apply it?
Just a little. It's just, yeah, it's just a little fix. It's not like a patch. It's just a, in. With material, like more sandy type material in it. It's not chips like we usually do, put oil and throw chips on top. It's more of like a.
Skin color.
Yeah, with, with kind of a sandy type material included in the oil. It's a different mixture. But no, that wouldn't, I mean, we're gonna work on, next year's project for concrete repair will be focused on Forest Street and Garfield. We'd opted not to do that this year because the detour is gonna be going through, the truck rock detour is gonna be used in Forest Street this year for the Seventh Street project.
So that ceiling net on the Garfield on the bridge out to, we wanna do that within another year or two?
We might wanna look at that, yeah.
Because that's fairly new road. It's not, nothing's been put on it, right?
Uh, did we put chips on it? Maybe not, but yeah, you're probably right. But uh, yeah, you're probably right. It's probably a good one. I know Clarence kind of has, has a strategy in mind and we've been talking with Lance and we just wanted to experiment. We can't do as much with, as we usually do with chips. It's about half of the quantity.
Can we do, can we do more since we're still under budget on the concrete?
We could, we could add some more.
I'm just saying, that's a truck rock, and we want to keep that as long as we can without room in it.
Right.
I don't want, I think the state will look at it as.
Right. I think there's some cracked ceiling we might wanna do before we, we do that and then you come over the top of it with, with the slurry seal.
Entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Bill to approve the bid for the slurry seal project for Missouri Petroleum for seventy-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents. Is there a second? Seconded by Chad. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion's carried. Uh, rubble site days. Does that mean it's spring's coming?
Yeah, spring's coming a little bit earlier, maybe not this week, um, but free rubble site days, wanna get this on the radar. You know, people are gonna be at home. And so people, we've already sort of get the calls. Um, so traditionally, we've had it kind of this first week of May. So I've got May second, May seventh, May ninth on here, but maybe moving it up a week earlier. Uh, depending upon conditions might, might be wise.
When does the rubble site open?
We're gonna look at doing, I mean, it's usually around the same time as when we're opening it, but I think we're probably looking at opening it around the end of March right now. Maybe the first week of April.
I'd hate to move it sooner because it's always soupy out there and we always get snow in April.
Right.
But if we open it sooner, then people can take stuff as they want.
Yeah. People are gonna be working on the yard sort of this year.
Yeah.
We're not gonna see it. It's too early, but.
Besides, if we do this today and then it gets super nice, we change it, then people are gonna get confused.
Right?
So, since we don't have any other days, you know, that we're, that we're looking at.
I know we always kind of shoot before graduation. So that people can have clean areas. Who knows, our graduations.
Entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Moved by James to approve uh, free rubble site days, May second, May seventh, and May ninth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. He was louder than you, Gary. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion's carried. Next, uh, we're going to hear from Brittany about what's going on at the library and.
Storytime.
Stories, yes, we'll talk about that. Um, yeah, I just wanna give you a little update on what's going on at the library. I gave you each one of these. My numbers are a lot easier to understand than Claire's. You're welcome. He's gonna explain, too. Yes, these are our winter um, reading challenge numbers. Um, ignore the title at the bottom where it says summer. It is winter reading. Um, so we started the winter reading challenge um, in twenty fifteen. That was the first year we ever offered something like this. It's basically a mini version of the summer reading program. Um, so we don't have all of the intense programming that we do during the summer, but we still have reading challenges. They still get prizes and then we do little like pop-up programs and then still have um, storytimes every week during December and January. So um, I just gave this to show you the growth of how well we've been doing over the last couple of years. Um, we're pretty happy with how this is going. Um, every year it's been, it's been growing and we've had a lot of excitement and we've been able to give some really fun prizes, which helps, and we're trying new and different programs, which gets people in the library and gets them to register for it. Um, so this is the biggest program that we have that goes on kind of during the winter season. Um, some of the other stuff that we have going on is a little bit smaller, but we do our Lego Club um, during the month of November, um, every week for kids age of six to twelve. And we've had really great attendance. We've been seeing anywhere from thirty to forty kids um, every week for that, which is a really good number. Um, and then we do our fall storytimes, which is, I forget how long it's been since I've been here, which is like September and October. Um, and again, have really good numbers with that. So our programming is going really, really well um, with that. And so now we're working on obviously spring programming, so we have storytime going on right now. Um, and one of the new things that we decided to try this year is our Facebook Live storytime. So I don't know how familiar you guys are with Facebook. Um, but you can, you never know. You can do Facebook Lives. Um, and so we've been doing basically our storytime that people come to the library um, and get um, on Facebook Live. Um, and so we originally started it um, thinking that it would be just for people in our community if they couldn't get there because they are sick or if the weather gets bad. Um, and what it's turned into is our very first storytime live reached over five hundred people. And we have people from Texas, Kansas, Maryland, Missouri that have watched our storytime lives. So that's pretty cool, because it's, it started out as an idea for just our community um, and it's become pretty widespread and, and really popular. And in the wake of everything that's going on right now with coronavirus, um, it's becoming a really good way for us to continue to reach out um, to our community members and to our library patrons. And yeah. Um, so that's something new that we um, have started. Um, along with that, the whole coronavirus thing, um, so we followed the school's decision and the state library's decision to close the library for this week, that there is no school. Um, and that's following, Siouxland Library also made that decision, as well as almost every other library in the state um, made the decision to close. So we are closed to the public, but we as a staff are there working. And we're using this time to very intensely be cleaning the library. Um, we have to put anything that comes back into the library, we're putting into a quarantine. We're cleaning it and then quarantining it for seventy-two hours um, to help kind of prevent any potential virus threats. Um, so we're using that time to do that. We are working on um, other cleaning projects and organizing cleaning out our closets and kind of downsizing. Um, we have some trainings and webinars lined up for our staff to do during that time since we will be closed. Um, and we obviously don't know what's going to happen um, with more prolonged school closures or what the state library or the CDC or anyone's going to recommend. Um, we've started looking at alternatives of what that might look like for the library. Um, but right now, we're just kind of taking it day by day. Um, and that seems to be the general consensus for all of the libraries in our area and the state library. Um, so we're just kind of keeping in constant contact and communication to see what the best direction is for the library. Um, it's hard because we are such a public space and the majority of the people that we serve are the children and the elderly. And when we have programs with such large groups of kids, I mean, sometimes if we show a movie, we can have up to seventy kids in there. Um, and then we also have elderly that come in. Um, we're just trying to make the best decision to create the best impact, um, to keep everyone healthy. Um, so for now, this week, that is what is going on. So we're still there. So if you need anything, just give us a call and we can help you. Um, but that's where we're at with that. Do you have any questions on what the library's doing or is there anything you would like to see us doing for our community?
How do people in Texas know you have a storytime?
Um, they follow our Facebook page because of family or friend connections.
Okay, so there's some kind of family relationship maybe?
Yep, to either someone that works at the library or someone in the community.
Somebody.
Yep, or we have a lot of library families that have moved. Um, and so they still follow our Facebook page, so then they get to stay connected to us in that way as well.
Wow, impressive.
Yeah, it's really, it's been really fun. So yeah, while we're closed, these, we're gonna continue these Facebook Live storytimes. Um, we have a lot of other fun events that we're gonna try to do to reach out to the community. Tomorrow, we're gonna launch a short story contest, because all these kids are home doing nothing, so why not get them involved and um, work on their writing skills? So we're gonna launch a short story contest um, for kids, teens, and adults to participate in if they want. And then they can just submit it all online and win a prize. So yeah, a lot of fun things um, planned for this, for this week. Um, one of the other big things I wanted to mention um, is that the library recently got re-accredited through the state library. Um, so basically, the South Dakota State Library has benchmarks that they set for public libraries and they have a three-tiered system. There's essential, enhanced, and exemplary. And we have um, been re-accredited at the enhanced level, so the middle level. Um, and that's the level that we've been at the entire time that I've been the director and I think before as well. Um, there are certain benchmarks that if we wanted to move to exemplary, that we would have to hit. Um, one of them being a public meeting space. So someday.
Keep playing the game, Michael.
Someday, yes.
Better get stronger, though.
But yeah, it's still, it's still a really good thing for us um, to be accredited, re-accredited um, at that level. So we're, we have hit basically, we've hit every level at the middle level, which is what we just got re-accredited at. And I think we're only missing like four for the exemplary. Um, and we need to hit those to get to the highest level. So some of them are obviously a little bit bigger. It's not easy to just add a public meeting room to a building. But you know, we've got big goals, so hopefully someday that will be able to happen for us.
In the accreditation, accreditation process that the state follows, how, how, how much of a role does the, all, all your programs that you, that you have? How, how do they factor in there? Are they, are they more significant than other things or?
Um, it's a pretty big part of it. Um, and they look at not just how many programs, but the types of programs that you're doing down to how many are you holding for children, teens, and adults? Are you offering, offering technology classes? Are you um, offering like STEM, stream type classes? Which is something that we're gonna start incorporating um, in our summer reading program this year. Um, so yeah, it's a huge factor, the programming, um, to get to that next, at each level. Um, and then it's obviously more to get to the next. So we're doing pretty good. Um, the last thing that I wanted to um, talk to you guys about is our summer reading program. Um, this year's theme is Imagine Your Story, so it's all about like fairy tales and that kind of stuff. Um, and we have eight weeks of programming for June and July, and we do adult programming. So part of the other reason that I'm here is, I don't know if you guys remember, two years ago, um, I asked for a request to serve alcohol at one of our adult programs, the beer history class. Um, I thought it was amazing. It was a really good success. I think Dean was there. It was really, I thought it was really fun. The guy was really good. He was very interesting. Um, and then we served um, beer samples from local breweries um, following these guidelines for how much you can give people. Um, so we are wanting to do something like that again. We have a presenter who's coming to talk about prohibition, um, not just within the United States, but within South Dakota and the Sioux Falls area. And then um, we would like to serve samples of moonshine that you buy from a store because you get charged tax.
That's grand, yeah.
So that is, the other is a night.
And, and the state law allows for that as, as long as it's samples. And the, the city just needs to approve the ability to do that. They don't have to get like a one-day liquor license or anything.
Cause you're not selling it.
You're not selling it and it's just a sample base.
And we're not charging anyone. And just like last time, everyone, um, we have to do it in the downstairs of the library, so we close it off to kids. We check IDs on everyone that comes in. They get a wristband and then they get a little like punch card essentially, so they can only have so many samples. They can't, they can't just like party all night at the library, so.
The library gets the rest of it.
Any que- questions about library or anybody might have?
I will say that the Facebook Live storytime uh, had been going around the libraries in the region. Um, people talking about it. And I was, I sat in on the board meeting for Siouxland last week and it was talked about there and in fact Siouxland is looking seriously into doing this because of the success of Bell Rapids. So definitely a leader in our region.
That's, that's great. Well, you guys do a fantastic job over there. There's no doubt about that and we appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Uh, we will entertain a motion to let them have uh, adult education about prohibition.
Make a motion approved.
Moved by Gary to approve uh, the library and adult education programs and serve liquor samples. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chad. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried. What date is that gonna be?
The second Tuesday in June, June sixteen, five-thirty. There will be snacks.
Well, that's good.
And liquor, yes, snacks and liquor.
Well, again, Brittany, thank you. Thank you for the work you do and, and the staff. Uh, we definitely appreciate that. The library is an outstanding gem in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is uh, gosh, this comes up, how many times a year is this gonna come up again? Gosh, this governor likes to give everybody off.
I thought you meant just Easter. Like, it's once a year.
Oh, we have Christmas time, do you remember? Hey, Justin.
Um, I don't have anything. I think it's all South Dakota work here. This is not my favorite thing to do.
Big three day.
So, yeah.
I'd ask him, Justin, I think last, last year we did do Good Friday, I believe.
Yeah, but historically, we, we, I don't think governors have given Good Friday.
Yeah, we've said that personally. Anyway. Entertain a motion.
Moved to give them down, which both of them.
Sure you wanna say that.
You really shouldn't say that. I just took mine.
We can remotion, right?
James has made a motion to uh, follow the governor's lead.
It can also die, so.
To administrative leave on April tenth and April thirteenth. Is there a second?
You're gonna make me figure this out on this new system.
Help me, I'll settle it.
Has been a second to the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
How did I know that was gonna happen?
I love that we don't regret everything.
Democracy in action. Anybody else wanna make another motion?
Moved to count off.
Moved by Bill to approve administrative leave for April tenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion's carried. Okay, it's time to pay the bills. It's almost, moved by Bob to authorize paying the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. Motion's carried. Administrative finance officer report.
Um. Corona virus city preparedness update. Um, you know, I've started those week, last week, putting this on the agenda, thinking that it's, we're not gonna have much of a role in this. That's really kind of blown up since the end of last week, as far as the response that, that's occurring across the state and the country. Um, really, everything I wrote in here on Friday is pretty much totally old information and um, but um, you know, we're, we're kind of passed, kind of small efforts on trying to curb this thing in, in the communities. Uh, I'm really trying to just, to follow what's going on, talking to all of my colleagues in, in the other communities and trying to find out what other communities are doing. Um, you know, um, I guess just in remaining calm, we all need to be leaders throughout this thing. I think that that's incredibly important. I think we also have a duty to provide accurate information out to the public uh, right now, too. Um, you know, I think there's this, this somber moment today when the president got up and said that his, I have all of his information uh, on, on your, on your packets right now, but that, you know, ten people um, in, in a room at, at one time to um, potentially, or to avoid bars and restaurants. So obviously, all right, you know, worry about, I think everybody who's here is, I mean, our main street might not be here in a few months. And that's it. And so we're talking sales tax and all these things. I mean, I think there's some realities to some of this. I don't think it's, it's kind of pie in the sky. There was a meeting yesterday, Gary and, and Mike and Bob and Tom were there um, with the community. There's a lot of community concerns. You know, we're doing our best, we're gonna just try to streamline and provide information to the public on our Facebook and on the, and on the, on our website as much as we can. You know, frankly, there's a little bit of a, of a information gap happening between the state and, and the communities. They say it's a mini haha. They won't tell us where, is it in Del Rapids? They will not tell us that. I requested that information and they're refusing to, to give that to us. So today, based on that information, we locked the door at City Hall and put a notice up to, to call us if you, if you need anything. Cause we, we can handle transactions, explaining building permits, anything really that I think the services that we do here can be done over the phone. And the goal right now is to protect Diane, Ben, and Claire, and myself, so that we can continue providing services. You know, we're gonna need to send bills out every month for water and sewer. Same thing with the guys. They need to be really, really careful out there when they're out and about, because we've only got three guys that know how to run our wastewater plant. And if all of them go down at one time, that's a, that's a scary scenario. So we're just trying to really push and practice everybody being careful at this point. You know, we don't have a huge staff to, to keep these services going. And that's really, I think, the critical part of this. I did pass out, we don't need to go through that page by page. Look at that kind of guideline, I'm kinda considering adding a guideline for policy going forward, so employees have an understanding of what we're looking at for, as this thing unfolds, kind of what expectations are. The, I would say the biggest policy in that, that is, that literally every city that I talked to is doing, is that if you have any symptoms, either, either COVID nine related or not, go home and we're not gonna charge your sick bank. We're not gonna charge you sick time. So people are questioning whether or not they should go home, cause they're gonna eat into their sick leave. And literally every other city in, that I've talked to is, is, is taking that the same way, so people go home and we're not infecting each other. That's probably the biggest piece that's kind of against what our normal policies are there. And then it kinda sets up some essential and non-essential for employees in case we get into, get into some situations when we need to send people home. Other than that, that's kinda where we're at, is the city, you know, looking at this long-term, where we might not be advised to all get together and have these, these meetings in the next month, the next two months. So I'm gonna be exploring potential options for online or speakerphone type, type settings. When everybody can be at home, everybody can be on like a Zoom meeting type platform, and then we can also take like public comment and that kind of thing to keep the public involved. Gonna be exploring that as an option. Not saying we're gonna implement that, but we might need to be set up, and all these other communities are looking at those options too. Cause we're gonna need to pay bills and we're gonna need to make decisions on, on things. We can't just shut down City Council for the next three, four months. So looking at that, from the community-based perspective, there's, there was a meeting yesterday about, and really the focus of that was people elderly that don't wanna leave their homes and, and people that might be in a, in a risk, high-risk type situation, or people that have it and they're at home, sequestered in their homes, being able to provide them with, with, with groceries and prescriptions and, and toilet paper and whatever at their homes, cause they can't leave. So the great group, it was the Del Rapids Ministerial Association, all of the food pantries, the city, the chamber, 211 helpline, and that's where we're gonna funnel all of this information through, is through 211. If people need help, they need to call 211, and then 211 will direct them to the resources at hand. In, of course, you that have your, that have your.
Avera was there?
Avera, yeah, you know, we, we've got great leadership at our local hospital here. And so we, we can be, we can be calm and know that they're, they're, they're taking control of this. There is a, a website I have on, if you have your laptop up, it's called Corona Help SF, Corona Help Sioux Falls. If you click on that, you can see this website and where we got to yesterday through our two-hour discussion was, the Chamber of Commerce is going to, is, is going to work with Marlena, who everyone knows, she's always, she comes to our meetings. She offered, she offered to assist the chamber on a part-time basis to help coordinate this effort. They're gonna create a website similar to this Corona Help SF, that it's, it's an easy website that you can, you can go to and request assistance. And it'll be a phone number too, that will publish that you can request assistance. And so that will all go filter through this one, this, this one website, and then those needs can be looked at individually, and then we can get the, this food pantry, pantry to get food to this home. We can get the, we can get the grocery store to deliver to, to this home, but it's all gonna filter through this website. So this website's in the process of being built right now. We're also gonna put together a nice one-page sheet, like back and, front and back sheet, flyer, that we can send out to all of the utility folks, or all of our utility customers. So because not everybody's online to see this shared on Facebook and everything, so that elderly that are in their home can get this notice in paper form. And there, there's a phone number there too, it's not just the website. So I guess basically to try and coordinate efforts to help people in need throughout this. Now, the one thing is that the, you know, the chamber raised their hand, decided to do that. That gave me relief, because there had been pressure for us to take this on, and it was something we need to, I need to be focused on, on the city side of things. But we can, I can help coordinate that with whomever, but we don't wanna take it on. They are gonna be asking for some, the chamber's gonna ask for a little bit of this additional funding to help fund this. Yeah, I mean, but part-time basis, it's not gonna be for, for months on end.
Drama will contribute some.
Drama is willing to contribute, I think, and a lot of the other, a lot of the other, I think we're gonna have a lot of, I think we're gonna have enough resources with our churches. There's gonna be a ability to donate to this page too, so that, so people can start collecting funds to help people to pay for, for food, for, for others. Or we get three months into this and people are sequestered at home, they're not working, they can't pay their water and sewer bill anymore. They can't pay their electric, electrical bill anymore. And those type of circumstances might occur where these donations will be there to be able to help people.
There, there was the meeting, and Gary, and I appreciate Gary, Bob, and Mike were there, and you know, and you don't, a lot of these things you just don't think about, but just the fact that people who can't get out of their home, they're quarantined, whatever situation, getting groceries. Well, we know the county fair does deliver, but you know, if, if all of a sudden people wanting to deliver, food delivered quadruples, they, you know, Steve, you know, they just don't have the staff to handle that, and so they would be volunteers. So we would be looking for people to volunteer to, to help with that part of the discussion about medications. And they're gonna check into, well, if they're controlled substance medications, how does that work? Because you just don't hand them out through the window to anybody. So there, there are other issues, the, the, you know, meals on wheels could end up being, seeing their number request increasing as well because of this situation. And then how, how does that work out? Cause if two people can deliver about 12 to 14 meals, you've got twice that, and then you're gonna need more volunteers, you're gonna need more people on that, so. So I, I think they, there was a good discussion, you guys chime in here, I think, with the trying to real, identify these needs that you, you just don't, you're not gonna think about it unless you do sit down with a group of people and, and oh yeah, didn't think about that, so. I think it's a, it's a, I think you know Marlena well enough, she's extremely competent in, with, with computer technology, and we know she'll do a really good job at coordinating this. The big thing is that when people call 211, they'll have this information, and here's who you need to call for this or that or whatever. And they've got one focal point. It's a lot easier to remember 211 than it is to remember seven digits, so.
Yeah, and it's going with 211, how early did it start at?
211, it's the helpline center. It's been around for a long time, 40, but in the nineties, I was on their board of directors and, and all, that's suicide prevention, it's all volunteer, it used to be helpline and volunteer center, whatever. So they have, right now, they're, they're almost statewide, I think. The, the, the state funds them to answer calls, while they're, they're, there's an 800 number that the state put out for, for coronavirus. You call that number, you end up talking to the helpline people in Sioux Falls. They've cut, that's the contract they have. They, they have a, an excellent reputation, they do a good job. Dana, Dana Stone is their IT guy in East Del Rapids, so he's the guy who was at the meeting. So you know, it's, it's, from our perspective, Del Rapids' perspective, I think it's, you know, it's a good thing. But it, it just makes it easier for people. And then the other good thing is there's, they're capturing the data about what the, who, who called the needs, you know, the age of these people, what the need was, et cetera. And out of this, sometimes they end up identifying a need that nobody even, even thought about and whatever, so. So there, so that's the, the plus side of it as well, so. Anything else you wanna add?
Just the main thing that I took home was the 211, it should be your first call. I mean, that's where you start.
And we've been having these meetings with this, with, with a smaller group than yesterday. We've had three meetings at the Light, Light of Life Church and that's, we, we had 211 at that meeting, the, the previous meeting, so we've been, we've been really kinda grooming everybody to, to move in that direction. And they've been there, and we started to use them during the fall flood, we didn't use them during the spring flood, started to use them more during the fall flood. We, we found some kinda inconsistencies with information, so we're, we're trying to hone this in. We're not gonna name this website Coronavirus Del Rapids. We're gonna name it, I think, delrapidsrelief.com. So when this virus leaves, we can continue to utilize this, this, this site as a central base for information for assistance in the community when we have disasters, future floods, future tornadoes, future whatever.
There, there were about 25 people there yesterday.
Yeah.
And as you mentioned, the, the storehouse, the food bank, the Corry Rock Church one, and, and June Decker, that group. And they've already been working together, you know, and coordinating and things like that, so. If you look up the word, uh, community in the dictionary, they're, they're probably a picture of Del Rapids. So it was, it was a, it was a great feeling to sit there and, and, and all these people with, with, where their, their interest is, you know, and what do we need to do to help people? And, and they're all, you know, stepping up, so it's a good thing, so.
I'll mention too, that the, the, it wasn't me, it wasn't the Ministerial Association, it was Jamie Drew and Stacy Frank that pulled the meeting together, which they got honored last night as Volunteers of the Year, and I mean, they're continuing that.
Yeah, the Chamber of Banquets. So, so as Justin mentioned, at the meeting yesterday, we, we committed the city to, to help to, to, to fund part of this and, and we're, we're thinking what.
I, I'm thinking a few thousand is kinda, I haven't, they were gonna get us a budget by tonight and we haven't seen that yet. I mean, I don't, I think a Squarespace site costs a few hundred dollars to, to get up and running. Some time associated with that, and then phone-wise, I haven't heard what they're gonna do, and then how long it lasts.
Yeah, I think they've already got a, you know, helpful.
I think they were gonna create a, a number that was specific not to the chamber though.
Right, right, correct, correct. And we talked briefly about earlier that maybe one way to handle this is that, that they would, chamber would just invoice us for the, the, the cost, yeah, you know, and invoice, you know, represented hours or however, whatever makes sense to, to Claire and all that. And you know, maybe, maybe we're willing to, you know, go to three or three thousand.
Yeah, it's, I, I, I have three to five thousand in mind.
But I guess what, if we can take some action tonight, because we don't meet for another three weeks and this is gonna start rolling, so we, what kind of motion would you like?
It's hard to say, Tom. Yeah, I would say maybe if you authorize up to at this time, and if we had to go and discuss that, I mean, I can tell the chamber, this is what's been authorized. If you go above that, we need to go back and have, gain more approval from the city, from the council.
I'd make one to authorize three thousand dollars.
Move by Gary to authorize up to three thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, you gotta, you really have to appreciate the, the fact that there are people in the community that they're, they're willing to, to, to step up and, and, and deal with these issues, so. And you know, by, by this coming Friday, who knows?
You know.
You know, hopefully we don't have it, but who knows?
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, it's.
Well, is it, anybody have any other things that they have on their mind that we, you think we should be doing that we're not doing, or you think we're going too far? I just would like to know, have some direction, because I'm flying, flying blind on this. I've been through this before.
Where, where are they gonna have the, where's she gonna work at?
Probably her office. Or from home.
From home, okay. That's just one, we're, we're not having to look for a space for her.
No.
Yeah, for, either, either her own or, or the.
She sort of has a compromised immune system. She's probably not gonna be, she's probably gonna be at home.
I guess, I guess. You know, it was really neat to see how that came together yesterday, I mean, the people and, and the sermon and the, the people that wanted her to volunteer. Pretty interesting.
I, I, today I sent a copy of him and, that's Jeff, I sent an email to the Lions Club, telling them what had taken place and then the need for volunteers, although most of the people, the volunteers that'd be helping are in our age group, but I guess, but, but still, there are things you could, you know, you can do, but just to keep them aware. And you know, we're gonna be looking to the groups within all the churches to, to step up and volunteer as the need, you know, comes about, so. Hopefully, hopefully, you know, who knows? We'll just deal with it day by day. And I appreciate Justin's, you know, working this issue and he's been on the phone, the guys have been on telecon, etc.
Flying blind, so if anybody has any thoughts, I'm willing to hear those right now. Provide some direction. I, I'm just gonna tell you my personal opinion, and I'm not trying to be alarmist at all, but it doesn't seem like our community's taking it terribly seriously right now. I, I quite honestly feel that way.
I, I think, I don't think we need to recreate the wheel. I mean, we don't need to either. You say you're flying blind, let's follow our big brother.
Yeah.
I mean, right?
I mean, but do we do that when he declares bars and restaurants closed? Do, is that something you want us to do? That's where I'm, that's where I'm wondering, where, what role do we play?
It'd be very interesting to know, who knows ones are, is there somebody in Del Rapids and all that?
Well, that's why I was trying to get that information, that we can make better decisions that way. And they're, they're not providing that to us.
The, the first one, and I believe, was he ever confirmed? The one that was over by, was it?
Hartford.
Hartford.
Yeah. I don't know why they, why we knew that one, but now we can't know any of the other ones.
From what I understood, he had interaction with, I know at least the Saint Mary's grade school kids, probably fourth grade, so. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I think he was part of the air guard. So, and like if I'm not mistaken, I think he was part of the air guard too. And I don't know when the last time they've had drills. And so you take that one person.
Right.
And you figure his interconnections and then their interconnections and
I noticed today that Nebraska as a state has a website out that says possible interactions that you could have had, like a certain Walmart and a timeframe of, you know, were you there at this point? That you could potentially have come in contact with somebody who had it. Where I do feel it's rather frustrating that our state isn't allowing us to know if it's someone in our community. And we don't even know, even know who it is or age or anything, but
That's the problem with a small town though. As soon as you know there's one here.
We're going to be able to figure it out.
Yeah.
So from my perspective, I think, maybe we don't know.
Well, then that was the response that I received is that they're not going to provide that information that you should act like it is. That was kind of what they responded to.
Which is the whole reason we're closing everything down.
You know, the downside, I will say to, you know, you know, Justin, you already said it, our sales tax, you know, if we, if we put it out to close all our food eating joints, you know, how long can they last getting closed? But in the same sense, you put anybody at risk.
I think it was the governor of Minnesota that
They just did that before the meeting.
Don't know how many cities did it before that, but
I think as far as Del Rapids goes and as far as trying to close the businesses, the businesses and the people are going to take care of it themselves. My wife and I went out to eat Saturday night in Sioux Falls. We could have picked wherever we wanted to eat. Willford, as we go by there, we weren't planning on that. At 6:15, there was one car buffet.
Yeah, the most crowded of places are the grocery stores.
Yeah, yeah.
It looked like Thanksgiving Eve Friday there on
It's just going to be a bad deal for every business. I don't think we need to
Yeah, and we might maybe just leave it to the, to the governor to make that call too. It sounds like it's happened in Minnesota and really frankly, I think the mayor of Sioux Falls said this last night during his press conference is that what, what authority? We don't, we don't issue like restaurant licenses to people. Like in New York City, they do that. They could probably threaten to take their license away from them. You know, people are, we don't have that. So we don't really have anything to enforce, even if we said it. So I think people will hopefully maybe make that decision on their own as this thing develops.
Yeah, if it comes from the governor's office, it's, carries obviously more weight, I guess. But we'll see what happens. So. But the important thing is that people are, are aware and it's kind of, it's kind of hard to maintain, yeah, we are here somewhere. If we're not here in three weeks, you know why. No, appreciate your support and, and I think we'll, you know, we'll, you know, this is a classic situation of, I think, this council realizing that Justin's going to be day, every day dealing with situations that come up and we're going to rely on his, his expertise and his common sense to, to make decisions when it happens.
There's decisions that need to be made. I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now, but we'll, we'll try to do that, you know, the email and that type of thing.
Bring your, your forehead scanner tomorrow so at the decon station you can scan it.
We do have tomorrow to get through too, so.
Since it was St. Patrick's Day, I thought we could have Bailey's cream, but I guess not. So.
Flood, flood hazard mitigation buyout, 10 applications were sent to the state on the, before the deadline last week. So we're going to be waiting to hear back on those. Hopefully mid-April and then grant dollars available mid-July and be moving forward with those.
Is that faster than they said before? Because, you know, I thought they said in that meeting that it could take a couple of years.
No, that's what they've been telling us. They've been telling us
That's great.
Application March, should know by April with the money.
The money part was
It isn't available till middle of July. Who knows with all this stuff going on. Our timelines are going to be, I don't know too, so. Personnel, something not totally been bringing everyone up to speed on this. This is, we've kind of been talking about this and then Trent and I kind of got into a deeper discussion here recently. So we're going to be implementing the GIS system this, this summer plan as of today. We've got the equipment purchased. We're getting all the online stuff ready to go. Trent, we've talked about in the past and Trent's kind of said, hey, maybe we can get an intern from SDSU that's, that's an engineering intern that you can get to come to the city. Get them out there, pay them a minimum wage. They can go shoot, shoot all the locations in town so that we don't have to be spending our guys' time doing that during the summer when they've got critical things they need to do. Because it's really just kind of a pretty easy thing to do. So Trent proposed this and I've got his email below here. I added later on after this weekend that the printed copies don't have. But he's saying they have this, this kid that's been working for them as an intern all this year. Good kid. They plan on bringing him on to get him more trained into, into doing more kind of surveying engineer stuff through the summer. But he's saying, he's saying, why don't you guys hire him on a part-time basis, pay him the 10, 15 an hour and utilize him when you need. 10, 20 hours a week, two, three, four weeks, whatever you need him for. And then, and then when you're done with him, you just kick him back to us and we'll have him do survey work during the summer when the project's going on. So seems like a really good way for us to get someone cheap, someone that's got experience and then we don't have to be committed to them at a certain number of hours. We can kind of bounce them back and forth between DGR and the city.
We don't have to advertise that position?
It's a summer seasonal position. It's kind of specific to this, I guess. I can, it's
Oh, I hope we don't. I'm just saying.
I, I don't think we have the circumstances because it's, it's a part-time, non-permanent position where we'll just appoint him at, as an intern, I guess. It's not like a competitive type position. Yeah.
Do they have an employment through DGR for him?
Yeah, he will be a DGR employee, but rather than DGR deploying him and then charging us an extra 20% on top, we just hire him. And it bounces back and forth.
He's got two employers.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, Trent's like, we'd have to charge you an extra 20%. So, something we're looking into, or I think we really want to go that way. So.
Would you like to move that?
Sure.
So move by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any other questions? All favors signify the same eye. All votes nay, vote carried. Just, I got to check and see if our lunch meeting next Monday, if the Sioux Falls mayor is still on, because there might be more than 10 of us. Let's spread this out. So I don't, I don't. The 24th is at 10 o'clock, is the pre-con?
That's, Lance and I kind of briefly talked about that. We'll see. I mean, we might narrow that down to rather than everybody, just me, Clarence and Lance and the contractor. We might just narrow it down so we're not meeting with a group of 20 people. So it's usually a full house type situation.
That will be taking place.
Is that a, is that a public meeting?
I mean, every meeting that we have is open to the public, but that's generally a that's the time for the city to have the conversation with the contractor about the project. And then to also bring into the loop all the utilities that are going to be affected, the gas, electric, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm just thinking about that Facebook Live story. Can we use Facebook Live?
For a meeting like that, it's more like a
Because you're a comment on Facebook Live.
You're thinking for our meetings in the future?
Yeah, well, not necessarily us, but kind of like something like this where you're trying to limit people who are face-to-face.
Yeah.
If it becomes a possibility.
As a more of a conference call type.
Yeah, this is more of like a organizational meeting where we're not, we don't, there's not like public times at this. And it's not like a, it's not like a quorum type meeting where you have to have public time. This is a, this is more like a But it's more, it's not even informational though. It's, it's conversation. It's, okay, what are you, what are you, schedule oriented. It's, it's saying to the contractor, you've got this summer to get the, to take the project done and better get it done because we're worried about that.
That was before coronavirus.
That was before. Well, you know, I mean, how is this going to affect the construction? Do you have any idea? How is this going to affect construction?
It's not going to be good. I mean, house building, you know, we lost one project because of this.
Okay.
And it's not necessarily the virus, the crash of their
The market, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, that's what I, this, I, I mean, how do these, are these contractors the big, you know, our H and W? As long as people aren't getting sick, I guess. I mean, it's outside work. I, I don't know. I've, how's it going to work? We'll just have to wait and see. I don't know. Who knows?
The other goal, the other goal I think we have is we're meeting as soon as we can after the pre-con meeting to get out a newsletter.
To get a newsletter on timelines and who's, and what to expect and all that kind of stuff. Yeah.
People have started asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know. Well, since the, the melt, obviously, for sure. We'll be, we'll get that info out as soon as that meeting's over.
It's a whole lot different on the 16th this year than last year.
Than last year.
Thanks for the stop, Sean Twither.
If no, if no one else has any critical important comments to make.
We adjourn.
Five moves that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. All favors signify the same eye. All votes nay, motion's carried. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, so smaller sample size.